For the purposes of discussing Miracle Field. We have Chuck Eaton, we have members of the Board of Ed, Miracle League Associates, as well as Recreation Department and Recreation League representatives. So with that, we will move to item two, which is a discussion of the Miracle Field Evaluation Study for the proposed Miracle Field location, Cloud Harbor Associates, LPL, with the Society. So thank you Chuck for being here. Want to introduce yourselves, yourself to the council and think what they agree with the presentation?
Sure, I'm Chuck Eaton, I'm a professional engineer with CHA, and I also serve as the town engineer at the town. So through discussions with council, we and with Lisa, we put together a concept plan report or a high level report, which basically looks at some different possibilities of where different fields would go with the idea that the Miracle League field would be, would be put at Birch Grove Primary School. If the Miracle League field was put at Birch Grove where the portable buildings were, then which, which fields or how many fields would be displaced by that? And where could those displaced fields go? Or where could the Miracle League field go? So it's sort of a disjointed explanation of what we did. So we met with some different stakeholders. We met with Recreation Director Bruce Watt. We met with Dr. Willett with the school board and we met with the Miracle League. And we went through the town athletic program and we talked to Miracle League about their program to get a feel for what was needed and what would be, what would possibly be displaced. So we took a look at the town fields. To work here. So we looked, we looked at the town fields and the school fields. So we looked at Crandall Park, Cross Farms, the Town Rec Center, River Park Field, the Birch Grove Primary School, the middle school, the high school, and Heron Cove Park. So what we did is we had some different pros and cons here for the different sites and some of the different sites that stood out. What we did was we put together some concept plans with an associated cost estimate for that. And just keep in mind, everything is very high level. There was not any, you know, soil investigations or anything like that. It's just a, it's just a concept. So scrolling down to sites. So this is the Birch Grove Primary Site with the, where the existing or the previous portables were, that is now an athletic field. If this baseball field here, this is the Miracle League field, if that were to be installed in this location, you would be displacing one lacrosse field or two, well, one youth lacrosse field or two youth soccer fields based on what the town has programmed there right now. So that was, that was one. One of the other concepts that we looked at was, so this is, this is Birch Grove in this location here. This is Cross Farms here. There is a kind of a gravel path that links the two. There's a flat area in this location here, which is kind of a stockpile laydown area.
Is that upper cross and lower? Or is that just lower?
For site two of that, you're looking at Silver's Grove.
Oh, this one is.
So, so Birch Grove, Birch Grove is right here.
Oh, okay.
Right? And then Cross Farms is right here.
There's a connection path.
See, so here, here's the portable.
It's the walking path, the walking path.
Yes.
So that's the back end of the school.
Yeah.
Behind the current softball.
Where the portable used to be. Right. Yeah. No, that's not where the portable.
No, no.
The portable has, yes. Yeah, right. Yes.
Okay. So one of, one of the concepts we looked at was if we, if we relocated the existing softball field that is in this location here, so in other words, north of where the portables were, if that became the Miracle Field and you relocated the softball field to this area in between the school and Cross Farms, this is, this is what something could look like with that. Site three or concept three was just placing the Miracle Field in between Cross Farms and Birch Grove. And this concept for site four was if you relocated the existing baseball field at Cross Farms. So in other words, the concession stand is right here, Adams Adventures right here, Birch Grove is right here. If you relocated this baseball field to in between the two sites and you put Miracle League at the existing baseball field, this is what something could look like. The town does have a plan to install an ADA access way up to some of these fields. It hasn't been constructed yet. But this is something that could be made to work. And granted, there's, there's many different pros and cons with all these different concepts. We just, we just had to start somewhere. Another concept was the thought of having the field, and I believe that the Miracle Field, the Miracle League also looked at this concept with having the Miracle League basically north of Cross Farms. So in other words, you have your concession stand and Adams Adventure here, and then there's soccer in this area here, and you can put the Miracle League in here.
So that's the lower part.
Correct.
Fields are over here, the lower fields, that's the upper field.
Correct.
Lightning field. And then, okay.
Correct. So we also looked at Heron Cove. There's an existing paved or patunus ice rink at Heron Cove, which is no longer used by the town. That area could be regraded with some additional grading to put a new field in this location. A drawback to this, this site is that it's, it's kind of an outlier. It's not, there's not a lot of visibility with this site. And then we also looked at a spot at the middle school. One of the drawbacks of this site was that there's a very steep slope, although they do have an ADA path that winds its way down to here. It's relatively steep, but you could fit a field in here. And I believe the Miracle League also looked at putting a field here. We put together some cost estimates, which are way too small for anyone to see, but essentially what, you know, the least, the least expensive option, and again, I don't know how council and the town would do things as far as finances go with what is Miracle League paying or what is the town paying for, but the least amount of funding required would be to obviously not displace any fields or do the least amount of clearing and, and grading. So, you know, something, something like site three, where you're putting the Miracle League field in the, in between Cross Farms and Birch Grove, you know, this would be the most cost effective way of doing something because you're not rebuilding two fields, you're only building one field. But again, this comes with pros and cons of this, this location here is much more isolated than if it were where the portable buildings are. And, you know, there's also some additional infrastructure that, that might need to be installed. And I know that there were some questions about the cost of things. And I'm happy to answer questions. And I also have John Hickok, who's from our sports program, who, who worked on this report. You want to discuss it further, go into more detail?
No, thank you, thank you Chuck. I don't think the floor of any questions for council members and also some of our guests over here tonight, so I'll start the counseling.
I'm interested to hear, there, there are several different locations that were very nicely explored here, but I'm interested to hear what Miracle Field, what their preferences for, for a location.
I don't know, I know the lead was, it might be on Zoom.
So.
No, they didn't make it.
Yeah, Mike, I am, so I'm, I'm the chair of the committee for kind of location and construction managers here, I think Todd, also Todd Penny's here.
Okay.
So, you know, we talked about this, so we've had a look at the pieces of it. You know, our, our view honestly would be for the town to come back, right? Because we've kind of personally, our group has set up kind of our decision criteria for a site. We've laid out costs we're looking at, we have talked to a couple other towns, so we would love town to come back and tell us what site you think makes best sense. Like I can review with you a decision criteria to kind of go through. And we've kind of shared some of that with, with the committee, those kind of putting this together. But I, I don't want to lead one way and more have town kind of say, this, this is what we believe from a cost standpoint in the location. But I'm more than willing to share kind of how we're looking at it from a decision criteria.
Yes, would that be okay? Is it, is it quick or?
Yeah. Once I go, yeah, it's not, I mean, it's not a block, it's not, right? We kind of went through.
Good, that's.
No, it's not. So we, it's pretty simple. We basically said financials are critical for us, right? Because we're trying to raise the money. And just to be blunt, like, we're trying to raise $500,000. That's kind of where we're at. We're probably around 200 right now, so we're on our way. The site characteristics, you know, we kind of had the topography, ease of implementation, availability of infrastructure, get there, right? How easy to get stuff done, we'll come back to cost. Zoning regulations, you know, Todd, engineer, we near waterways, right? How difficult is it to make changes? We know some stuff across farms is a concern. Facility amenities, right? So things like being at Birch Grove, even across farms, where there's things already there, like bathrooms, things for kids access is important to us. Location access, I'll say for two dimensions. One is people are traveling in. This is not just town kids. We have kids who would be coming in from other towns, easy for them to get to, near kind of main roads, but also on the site. So kids in wheelchairs moving around, ADA compliance is really important that we can get the kids safely from parking lot to the playground. And then one, you know, we, we got to talk about what we call ongoing operations, right? What is going to be the cost of us to manage it, to continue to keep the cost under control? So the insurance aspects of it, so there's this thing that we end up deciding, it's kind of the ongoing piece to worry about. So we've kind of built a matrix of that. And as we talked to the different towns, we're kind of filling in, and our goal as a committee is to make a decision that this is where we want to go. So that's how we're looking at these. Like this is cost, and I know this was fed in. So they, this has been a great job of kind of pulling it together. The costs are a big piece that kind of fluctuate all of it, like that's the big one that I've seen on this.
Yeah, excellent.
I don't know if that's helpful to you guys or not.
That is, thank you. I, I would also like to say, just from my experience on the Birch Grove project, that I have some concerns about drainage for behind Birch Grove. We had to add, the Birch Grove project had to add some rain water management, if I'm remembering the term right, I'm sorry if I don't have it exactly right. We had to add some rain water management mitigation to the Birch Grove site, but that was only to deal with the school building and the surrounding sidewalks. And it won't deal with, you know, runoff from other things. And I know that the inland water commission also had a, some concerns about drainage in the neighborhood behind that area. So I do have drainage concerns. Unfortunately, I just think we need to know what we're getting ourselves into. So, thank you.
Thank you. So I don't know if anybody saw their email, but first of all, great job, right? This was great, like looking at this and seeing it all laid out and having the pricing here and everything. This is, this is, I love this stuff. But I know today we got an email from Dave about some of the assumptions that were in this, the first, the, the first location there regarding the size of the fields and such like that. I don't know if you had a chance to look at, at that piece, but honestly, that's not my favorite location. When I'm looking at this and I'm thinking of what we're trying to accomplish with the, with the Miracle Field and everything else in that, I love option five, like the Cross Farms one, because we've got parking, you've got accessibility, you've got the concession stand, you've got facilities, you've got everything there. And I'll be honest with you, I wasn't expecting it to be that low. I thought we were, I think, and I think the general conversation in the beginning was that it was going to be up closer to Adams.
In Richard.
Goodness gracious. There was, it's a lot wetter there, so I really like it being down low by the soccer field, that lower, that lower parking lot there. And that does seem like the most, well, not, it's not the least expensive, but I, I think it, it's a good thing for the buck from, from the perspective of, I'm very familiar with that area, you're not going to have the issues of the, the swingback and all the other stuff, like for accessibility and that. So is this one here, I thought when I was reading it though, there are some concerns about it possibly being wet landy kind of?
Yes.
So is there, is it like a massive concern? Do you think it's going to change the, the cost of the estimates that you gave us?
So the estimates that we put together, we tried to add in different percentages to account for, you know, wetland, wetland flagging, wetland issues, stormwater issues, these sorts of things. And I think, I think if this, if this area is identified by the different stakeholders as something that I was really interested in, then we could look at that a little bit closer and kind of define that a little better. But I, this area is kind of interesting in that you have some room to play around in there, so if there are fingers of wetlands, or if there is a depression or something like that, you know, you, you would have some room to slide that field around to try and avoid that.
And that is the, honestly, I think that's probably one of our biggest community fields and assets when it comes to all the different types of sports that are played in town. You know, that when my kids play, there's a bazillion people in there every weekend. I don't dislike the Heron Cove option, except that I feel like it doesn't have the facilities. It doesn't have, like, it's a good area, not as highly used, but it doesn't have the facilities that I think would be imperative for a field like this. My, my, my take so far.
Sure. And you had, you had mentioned soccer's letter?
Yes.
And there are questions about the size of the fields and that sort of thing. So when we met with the rec director, that was, the displaced fields were based on what the town's programming, athletic programming was currently or at that time. So that's why we were looking at two youth soccer or one lacrosse being displaced. And so if that programming is going to change, you know, an issue with that or something, then, then that displacement would grow.
Down to the fluidity of, of the soccer program. I know it's set up here as two larger fields and one smaller field, but I know, like I said, when my kids played, there were like 17s, one field. Like there's like, depending on which age group is out there and which weekend.
Try 16.
All right. It's been a while. But I know, but it's, so it had that flexibility to kind of either have a full U-12 game or have like six U-8 games. That's my, my concern, which has always kind of been my concern with, with that, that location specifically. I think we would need to take that into consideration with the, with the fields that we know are, have the flexibility to be able to meet the, the demand there. But again, with option five and six, Cross Farms and here in COVID and that, this is, gives us a new resource instead of worrying about where we're going to place other fields. That's it. That's it.
And I do want to recognize, Mr. Gary sent a PDF, it was literally in the afternoon, I got to read some of it, but incorporate that into the minutes of our meeting, just as we asked any Board of Ed members or any members that couldn't make tonight to submit that information, but we can try to refer to it. Just wanted to kind of get your perspective, your option five. I thought all there were some concerns about that area in terms of parking or accessibility, and I kind of wanted to see if you could speak a little bit.
So, so first of all, before I get into that, I'll lean Lou, Tammy, Steve, John, Sammy, Katie, God bless you. And, and I mean that, you know, not, not, I'm proud of that public and not yay, nay, I mean, you know, what you guys are doing for the town, thankless and, you know, watching the sauce it made for the last 15 minutes of the meeting, you know, I got to deal with angry parents, but nothing like what you guys have to do. So, as well as, you know, of course Lisa, the rest of the town staff, you know, we don't thank you enough, everybody complains, but you know, at least me personally, as a citizen, thank you for your work. Second of all, the timing on my submission was absolutely horrible, and I apologize back to trying to get up to you sooner. I didn't have any hopes of it actually being looked at, you know, a couple hours before that budget meeting, so I certainly appreciate that. But regarding the report, again, I think Chuck is firm for what they put together. There were some general concerns, and we talked a little about the, what's called the segment one proposal at the Birch Grove location. I think there was just some misunderstanding of how the, the fields were used, and probably the easiest way to explain it is, and Chuck and I actually talked a little before this meeting, the replacement cost of the soccer field is listed as about 300,000. A replacement cost of baseball and a softball field is about 750 to 800,000. It's reasonable to expect that to replace the soccer field, it would be about the same cost. There's reasons that, that wasn't in the report, mainly because, correct me if I'm wrong, there wasn't a good home for the soccer. And so a lot of those costs, you know, just cannot, if, if you put that in, the overall cost of those projects, you know. The, the recommendations that came up, and again, particularly the Cross Farm, what are quite interesting. Personal point of view, I, I agree, I think that's a, that's a very cool solution. The one thing to be aware of is it would absolutely require some nature. We are currently at a situation of complete critical mass at Cross Farms from a parking point of view. Included a picture in the report of typical Saturday morning, and if you don't believe me, this Saturday morning, dark, 11:15, come on by. And I was up there last fall and I counted, you know, 46 cars that were parked. Baseball season too. And this weekend is going to be baseball season, right? And that morning, there were not any other soccer games going on except for U-8. I think there was one baseball game and it was a nice day, so there were kids at Adams Adventure. So then the additional attraction, you know, of a Miracle Field. And from a practical point of view, the last thing you want to do is build a wonderful Miracle Field, have participants parking half a mile away. I mean, that's nuts, that's, you know, that's bringing the ball to the, you know, to the one yard line and following. So you need some additional, that would need to be considered. Same thing with, with the Heron Cove, you know, or area, but it's a much smaller. There was other sites that, that we had come across in town that could also be a tent. One interesting one is actually also at Birch Grove, but of the current soccer.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to find.
If you go to number one Chuck.
Is one the best one?
Yeah, I think, yeah, so it's, it's tough to see, but if you look where the Miracle Field is there, just south of that, which would be down in this orientation, there's a wooded area that is very flat.
Don't you have it on your presentation?
I have it on my presentation.
You happen to have that?
I have it on Thunder.
But it, it graphically, it fits it. Before this meeting, I walked around there with my 300 foot tape, and don't tell anybody to put some stakes in the ground, but it fits it. And, you know, the neat thing about there is, you know, you're at Birch Grove. You can pass it around.
Got it.
You know, it, it fits, it's ADA compliant, you've got all the, you know, parking there, you get all the benefits of being at that location. It's just a little bit of south of us, of the proposal location. So, and again, using a lot of the figures in the report, adding and subtracting, you know, adding in for clearing trees, subtracting and some, that Wonderwall wonders actually comes out a little cheaper than all proposals that are in there. So, you know, I think that should definitely, you know, still be considered.
Chuck, did you have a chance to look at?
I did, Chuck, I have that on my screen, if, if that's, if I can share, I don't know if I can or not.
Do you want this?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, just a moment. Hold on a minute, John.
While you're taking care of that, I have a question. So is that property that you're talking about, that, now that's off BOE property, is that correct? Is that, is that going to be town owned property?
I spent about an hour in the building department, a month, but all the prints for Birch Grove and Cross Farms, and I read them correctly, it's, it's town slash BOE property. Now, I don't know if there was any easements to the road and the houses on the upside, but.
I, I looked it up on GIS before the meeting, and it does look like it's on Birch Grove school property.
Chuck, how do you feel about that, that spot?
I think that that's a viable spot, and I think that, you know, it, it would deserve some more study. And, you know, I think.
Oh, that's why. Portables.
Yeah. You know, and I don't know what Katie has to say about this, and also the Board of Education or the school board, with what their thoughts were as far as, you know, why, why this space is undeveloped or anything, anything like that.
The only, the thought that jumped right into my head was a concern about neighbor.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're going the same place, Lou.
Yep, exactly.
There are some neighbors across the street from that property who are feeling like their, you know, the trees were cut down in some of those places, there's now a lot of light pollution, I guess you call it, that comes in. So I think if we were to pursue this, we just need to be aware.
There'd be a nuisance complaint.
There, that.
The way that it looks right there is like, it's kind of still got a good.
Yeah, but you have to think that, this is what I learned. Yeah. Oh my God, that in order to do any like construction, you got to have a lot of space all around it. And that tree area isn't like, it's not dense, it's not dense old growth, it's new stuff.
Yeah.
And so like, the good news with that is it'll grow back quickly, right? But not like tomorrow.
Right.
So I, I just, that would be my only input on that. I would say that in the conversations that I was involved in with Miracle Grove on the Birch Grove site, that there is a lot of excitement from the school about having Birch because, I'm sorry, I'm having Miracle Field on the Birch Grove site, you'll do it, right? Because it would be something that the school would like to utilize. And it's not the same as Cross Farms, but there, the whole campus is now ADA accessible, which is good. And there is that additional parking, which is actually up on that map in between the fun little Miracle Field picture and where the modulars are, there is parking there that was created when the modulars were put up. And that isn't, it's, it's actually gated off now, I believe, for the Birch Grove use, so it, we could obviously open the gate, right? Easy done. And so the parking issue that you brought up, and it would be very close to the field and accessible.
And how about from a facilities perspective, though? Because the schools aren't open on the weekends, so like, that's a big concern, especially with people with disabilities, is making sure they've got some kind of the facilities available. And I know prior it was just a fourth block.
Yeah.
So what, from the facilities perspective, is there, how would, how would you guys see that working?
I was going to say, working, Katie, it's, Steve and Todd can help too. My understanding is most of these are going now or during the week. It's not even as much on the weekends, so it may be during the nights, so that's how they run them now. It's not even as much on the weekends. So it may be during the nights or that's how they run them now.
Yeah, that, that's not correct. Soccer, uh, is, uh, uh, this particular site. Is a good chunk of the day on Saturdays, don't currently have anything on Sundays, uh, and we will cross as the same.
You guys having the port bodies is just fine.
Well.
Well, alright, um.
But. They're using port bodies now, they're just a challenger that's being used today.
Yeah.
But I think, I, I want to make that point though, stuff is during the week and not as, not getting a field doesn't say we wouldn't extend the use.
Uh, thank you, Mr. So the question that would have though is for the miracle field. Would it be preferable to also have it closer though to like an ADA accessible, uh, playground area? Just because if I know that having talked to people being involved and having, you know, that it's a family event. You get, you get a lot of people there and so you, uh, you know, that you'll have that ability for, uh, you know, for other ADA. Uh, requirements or other people that may need that type of, those type of facilities. You have access to that. And plus you already have, I think that, uh, for, uh, where we're looking at. Either cross barns four or five, that you already have ADA accessible bathrooms already built there, facilities built there and everything else. Now, yeah, so how would, I mean.
So we've talked about, so we've talked about that, right?
Yeah.
You've got one or the other, right? So being at Birch Grove, we have it at the school and it, it gets used. I think Katie mentioned, I think that was one of the attracts of Birch Grove, we could use the kids are there, they could use it. Also being an out of the venture, so a number of us participate out of the venture, so having it close to that. So I think when we first talked about it, the field was at, it was that big concern of the drainage. Thing we talked about, we didn't really see a viable option behind town's adventure, right? So that kind of got. That's where the focus became with Birch Grove, service already there. And again, we came back, that seems like the most logical sense, but we. I, I would kind of balance the both of them, they both have the pluses.
Yeah, I, I mean, and just, and the other thing is, I, I mean, cause I understand with virtual, but especially if we use that night, I mean. If you're going to be using, I, I know that you have the port potties, the portable, uh, portable bathrooms that you use already there, but if it's something that. You know, eventually might want to expand that. The concerns is with the, uh, school grounds being used, you know, and stuff like that. And also I know that, uh, Board of Education. That there's other considerations that would need be taken into consideration, because then they'd be the ones that would be responsible ultimately. Uh, for the maintenance, uh, or assisting the maintenance on school grounds. At some point where that, that's one of the concerns that say things go south with the, you know, with the overall funding. Uh, down the road for the miracle field is that then there's ultimately becomes a field that the Board of Education would have to take care of.
So, well, I guess I would state it, I'll speak.
Yeah.
I would say if someone came and said, A or B are equal, but we can get an easier intercross, no one's going to complain. I think you have the benefits of both. We're not tied to, it has to be a, we're not, don't think about that. But if you got it, if now I go back, you look at her and call, not really good option for us. I think that middle school, so those last few just aren't there. So it's really the first role. For us, we, I guess we eliminated because we didn't think it was a site with buyable to put there. We just never brought that up.
And, and I, and I appreciate your, your being upfront with that and, and you know, it's, it's something where I'm still torn on about it. I think that all of us. Are in agreement, or at least I, I don't mean to speak for the rest of the council, but I'm, I, I would like to see this happen. I think it's something that we definitely would be value added. It's just a matter of finding the appropriate location. Um, that wouldn't, that again, wouldn't, not unnecessarily uncover BOE, uh. Property, but at the same time that we make sure we have the, uh, appropriate facilities for everybody involved. So thank you very much for the question.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
And I had one quick question, I think it was to Dave about, there was an option that you kind of had concerns about, which was, uh. TMS, but then you offered an alternative. That had an access room, do you recall that portion of your, of your slides? And I'm not sure if Chuck had seen that, what kind of feedback that would be.
Yeah, and again, we, we talked a little about that. So there was a, I don't know if I had specific, if we had a specific concern about TMS, but there was a. A, another proposed option at TMS. That is, um, basically back, uh, Tim could scroll down, I think, yeah, there we go. It's about, it's about two hundred and ninety foot bomb with softball. So I, I know you could hit that, but. So back in the back corner there, uh, would be some space, uh. You'd obviously be parking down there because it's quite far from the lot, uh, Steve, but there is, as it so happens, an open area. That, you know, could provide some parking, be paid, so on and so.
Yeah, no, but I mean, I think the grading from, I think TMS, the other, the option that Chuck reported, that, that wasn't interest me. I think the accessibility facilities was a concern, but I wasn't sure if, you know, that could alleviate the issue of parking and accessibility at least to the field. I don't know if Lisa, if you would know whether or not, you know, we can reallocate or realign any of our. You know, porta potties or facilities that would be within reasonable access, or if we've been able to adjust our, our. Our inventory every year of those porta jocks to have a more ADA accessible.
All the, all the porta potties at the field.
Yeah.
Are paid by the youth sports.
Right, yeah. So that.
Which is fine. Hey, we're all this together, right? Cause we're, we're the primary users of the, the field and, you know, we can, we can, uh. Provision for that, we can budget for that, it's not complaining about, but just.
I guess probably just my experience, are any of them, are, are all of them ADA accessible or are there options to?
Uh, but they darn well should be.
Yeah.
And, and the vendors we can't utilize, okay.
There's money too. AD accessible.
Yeah, so it's about two times the cost.
Yes.
So, um. So it is definitely more inclusive area where you're still going to have a field of your own, but it's going to be started by community. And I, I totally understand what you guys are saying about the parking, uh, and I, I don't know what the, like Chuck, if there's any kind of idea. When you were looking at it from the field perspective and that, what there could be for, um, options for increasing parking down.
We didn't, we didn't look real hard at the parking. We did, we did speak with the miracle league about how they typically. You know, do their handicap parking and how that, how that typically works and, you know, I'm sure if that is, if that site is something that. Everyone wants to look closer at, I'm sure that, I'm sure that's something that we put together.
Yeah, I mean, I, can I add something? This is Todd, Todd Penny, and, and Mike's doing a lot of the heavy lifting. So, and again, I, I, I think. Birch Grove was looked at for its, um, ease of construction, accessibility. Um, this site, site five at Cross Farms was also looked at for the reasons that I've been hearing. Um, but was put at the next tier down from a cost standpoint. But I think, I think Mike indicated that pretty clear, is that's, you know, as, as a organization is a. Uh, that has no money, but we're raising about two fifths of the way there. Uh, in terms of what we think from a budgeting standpoint, we, um, we can get from a field. Uh, not all the thrills and, and that you would want with bathrooms and lights. And, uh, other amenities, uh, but you know, a very good bare bones field, that's what we're looking at. So. C H A did a great job with their, uh, with their, uh. Preliminary S, preliminary concepts and the estimates, uh, certainly we have. Uh, s- started conversations with consulting, uh, engineer slash landscape architect firms that would be willing to do a lot of. This work pro bono for us in terms of developing contract documents. So. Um, I, I think if you guys are all kind of gearing towards. Uh, the cross farm site and, you know, thinking outside the box. Is a great thing with the wooded area in front of Birch Grove, albeit there'd be some. Probably some cons with the neighbors across the street, um, you know, in advancing, um. That activity close to their properties, uh, might have to get addressed through some landscaping. Um, as such, um, so. You know, we can look at that, you know, we wanted to hear where the council was coming from. Um, and I think we've had this dialogue before, you know, there is additional costs. With that cross farm site, and again, there's additional costs with the Birch Grove site, right? Cause we. We've kind of got blinders on and, and, um, in terms of. Not worrying about the displacement of other, uh, programs, but that's not the appropriate, uh, position to be. And, and that's what C H A, uh, has done pretty well, at least with concept one, and then with the other concepts with the softball field and the little league fields. And so on and so forth. Um. But I guess we would kind of need to know where you think your final commitment would be. Versus what our commitment would be from a funding level, uh, so we can look at all of the sites that we're looking at, not just here. But in other communities, um, that, and look at how that, how they all rate.
Yes, I, that's impermeable, don't run. I, I'm the town little league president. I just thought I'd jump in here too after Mr. Penny's thought and thanks for the invite too, but. Um, just very quickly on behalf of town little league, sites two and four really don't work. We're replacing Birch Grove softball field that we were dying to get online. After the Birch Grove, um, construction project in Cross Farm C, uh, is that little league field that we, we call it Cross Farms there, which is used almost every night. And all day Saturday too. So just as you're, as you're thinking through the, uh, um. The sites that you're looking at, and those were a million four and a million five, the most expensive sites too. Um, I would just implore that you don't look at those two. I think the, uh, the report was very wise in looking at this situation or this field out in the woods. Um, but to have a field that's used by hundreds, we have three hundred and seventy-two people register right now, of which only. Eleven are challenger right now from town, um, displacing a pile of people with the promise of a field built out to the woods. Doesn't make sense to me. Um, I, I don't know when that field will be built, whether it's going to be built in a year, two years, three years. I heard you talking about. Two hundred thousand dollars at the town council meeting, it might never be built. So please keep that in mind. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Thomas, appreciate it.
As I had those X off.
Yeah, they were, they were not, I, I think. I'll open the other questions. I think I just need to go back to a higher level, just to kind of understand the process for, for you, Chuck. It was about a four to six week process. When did that really, you know, commence for, for you to start that process? And, and I think there were some folks that may have wanted to try and do this sooner, there's always the concerns that there've been delays and. Um, you know, trying to get this meeting off course, maybe more time than we had initially anticipated. So I was wondering if you could talk to a little bit about how much effort need we put into this?
Sure. So, so we, we went and visited the different sites that we had identified. And then we met with the different stakeholders, um, and basically went through with them. The information that we gathered in the field, some of the words, like for instance, um. Certain fields looked like they were underutilized. So when we were talking with the rec director, we said, okay, what's going on with these fields? They don't look like they're being used. What's the plan for them? How are they programmed? Um. And that, that basically answered those questions and we could, we are, okay, where are these little niches that are, that are underutilized that we could. You know, fit some of these different fields. And of course, you know, the fields have different shapes, so some things fit well in some places and. Not in others. So, uh. It took, it took a little longer to be able to meet with the different stakeholders. Uh, just because of trying to get meetings set up and that sort of thing. Uh, and then once the, the programming information. That, that we needed, you know, we put the concepts together and the, and the estimates.
No, thank you. And if we were to move forward with an option, we do have our agenda for next week to consider negotiation with the miracle league. If there was an option that could be negotiated upon, if it were to say to be option five and there are issues with those soils, would you recommend? Additional engineering stuff needs to be conducted to validate that feasibility or any like significant concerns or needs to shift it all. One or the other. Something that was one of the, the cons that was listed for option five for cross farms.
Yeah, I think, I think that's more wetland, wetland issues, you know, I think, I think the first thing, you know, would be to probably get a, get a survey. And to get the area flagged, even, even if there are, you know, previous, uh. Previous flagging that's been done for other projects on cross farms, depending on how old that is, it may no longer be valid, it may have changed. Um, so probably be.
Probably different than it might have been if it was produced ten, even five years old, probably.
Sure. Um, and John, I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
No, I, I, you know, option five obviously is in the woods there. There is some topography associated with that, so there, there definitely would be some ramping and or. You know, filling of that site to, to happen. So, uh, you know, from a, from a, you know, understanding where the, where potential wetlands may be. And then maybe a couple of soil, uh, borings, just to, to ensure that if we had to build that field up, that the underlying soils. Were not going to be, uh, further impacted by adding additional fill in that area. Um.
Can I, can I just add or ask a question to C H A? So, w- we had compiled a concept plan in this, in this location utilizing, um. Previous, uh, A two, uh, and T two, uh, wetland delineations by town engineering. Um, were you resistant to use that as to lay that out? Because. You know, there is existing topography information there too, and it's about fourteen, and I, I don't want to exaggerate. But it's, I think about fourteen to sixteen feet from, because if we were trying to keep this field up at the parking lot level. You know, and try to keep it ease of access, there was a significant amount of fill that would be required into that area. And there was just the, at the limit of that fill was where the wetland delineation was back then. Certainly, uh, wetlands, and, and I've been in the business for a long time, right? And you see, uh, wetlands agent there, so that's my. Other, uh, that's my other, uh, life, um, as a talent here, wetlands agent. So wetlands will evolve over time, right? As, as strange patterns changes and things of, it takes a long time for that to happen though. Um, so, right, we would need to do all of that site investigation and the question becomes is. If, if we are going to look at the site closely, right? If Talon is saying to miracle league, this is where we think you are best suited. Then we can come back, go back to the committee and say, well, here's the pros and cons with that. How do we want to proceed? And, and I think I'll go back to then. And, and I think I'll go back to then, really, it's about the economics of it for us, right? You know, our goal right now is to, is to raise a half a million dollars, which we've, we've, we've done a pretty good job at this point, uh. So it's now, now getting to that point, but the estimates that you see in front of you are not a half a million dollars, right? Um, so they're, they're far away from that, and certainly a lot of my costs that we were doing this were pre-COVID, right? And, and, and that's something I've let the committee know too, is, uh, supply chain, inflation. Uh, all of these things have had a dramatic effect on construction, so we may not be at five hundred anymore. We may be somewhere a little bit higher than that. Um, and that's what we kind of need to wrap our heads around as well. But I, I think what we want tonight, and, and, and to have the council say we really like site five. Right, or we really like site two, or we really like, you know, site seven, whatever that is. Or we really like Dave's site up in the woods, uh, in, in front of, um, in front of Birch Grove. So those would be more of a process for us to get going and doing some evaluation. Um, and we can talk about who does that evaluation, right? We, we, we've, uh, we're party to a six thousand dollar, uh, uh, study that you've got a nice product, uh, and, and good information from it. Um, what are, are gonna be our exposure to that, right? Uh, you know, are we gonna be now, is Miracle League going to be asked to contribute another three thousand for another six thousand dollar study? So those are the things that we kind of need to know. Before we make a decision and expend additional monies.
And then you talk, there's maybe one other question, maybe either to you or to Mike, what is, is sort of the alternate timeline for development?
We want to, we want to be building this thing in twenty-three, is where we want to be, right? That's where we want to be.
Two things out there, right, one is a timeline for construction, we, we feel confident, you know, as we go into next year, the money's gonna fall, right? Cause I, I, we, I can tell you, I have donors I've talked to, I need the location, I can't, without the location, I can't get the Migo National, but I left the location, so it's kind of a chicken egg on that. Todd's rights, twenty twenty-three, the bigger one for me is getting this decision, so I'm gonna play the program manager on this thing, right? So as Todd mentioned, like I, I have a couple of towns I've talked to, I have one in his pocket now with decision. I got rough estimates, I got town council, anybody voted go, right? So I, I do have stuff sitting here, so it's more for me, and I know we gotta go through the process, we all would love to stay in Talon. I guess, as, as you mentioned in negotiation discussion, I'm just looking for, you're not gonna get rockets on this, Todd, these numbers are gonna change. What do we feel are ranges, so I can go back to our committee and say, listen, here's what Talon, we believe the range is gonna be, location, here's what some of the risk could be. And things are working out, also, I would say of the next, you know, thirty days, I'm, I'm trying to get enough information to be able to sit in a room with as much as I have and try to say, okay, at least get a good call. Cause I also, if we cycle someplace else, I don't want to be wasting your time and money either.
Yeah.
So that's why I'm trying to juggle. It's always that, how much information, we're spending too much money to get information, we really know enough. That's, that's what I'm trying to push on.
And I'm gonna go to council, I'm sorry, just one, one thing I think that is our intent was to try and get an idea, consent to the council, there's an ideal option. And then, yeah, and again, if I mentioned, it's on our meeting packet next week to
Yep, yep.
Allow the interim town manager to begin negotiations by based off those discussions, so that, that's where we're really trying to get this signal to you.
Then come up with a range with that looks like, and then we can take it and kind of figure out.
And I appreciate your patience through all this, it's definitely been through the pandemic, town manager is leaving, you know, it's been, it's been a struggle in a lot of ways, so. You know, we thank you for that, so, but thank you for your patience.
Oh, good, and it's, uh, I echo everything, I mean, uh, you know, we've been working on this for a while. Um, that, one question I had is for, uh, for site five, uh, with, uh, and it's a cross arms. How close is that, uh, is that field that's depicted there, how close would that be to the ADA, ADA, uh, playground area?
I think it's like within a few hundred feet, I think.
Okay. Right, yeah, cause I didn't know who was north or south.
It's not far. Looks a lot bigger than it is.
Okay, oh, good, um, and then with that being said, you know, my, uh, I guess my suggestion or, you know, my proposal would be is that we move forward or at least take a straw poll vote on, uh, site number five. With an idea that, um, I would also like to see what the option would be for the one that was proposed. Um, regarding the, just off the, uh, Birch Grove site there, uh, in the, uh, not, not like basically for site number one, but off to the, uh, south side of the parking lot there. Knowing that, you know, we're probably gonna get some pushback from the neighbors, but at least getting the feasibility there. Since I know that as proposed in, uh, in site number one. Right now, uh, that the construction costs for there would be one point two million. Uh, as proposed, and then the one four down at, uh, or cross farms at site five is nine hundred thousand, so that's savings of like three hundred thousand dollars right there. But if we could build on that, so where I know a lot of the cost would be relocating those other sports fields. Or re, you know, reworking them, uh, as part of the, uh, part of the expenses. You know, seeing what it would cost to build off the backside there, since you do have the parking, you have the other sites available, you have the same thing that's uh, as, uh, as Ms. Murray was saying regarding the school being able to have access to it. Which is something I'd like to examine if that's a possibility. But my proposal would be is that to, to go forward, uh, at least have some of the, uh, site we're done or site examined for site number five, so you can get determine the wetland, you could determine everything else, and then we could at least have narrow it down from seven proposals to what I'll call one and a half, so.
I would offer a really opportunity, if there's any else from the council's questions, or would like to speak, I'd be like, if you have at least presenting a straw poll, then understand that there's a a preference for appeal, that we start with, start with five, so.
Real quick, I know you're trying to wrap this up. Regarding site five. Soccer football, we saw that, you know, excitement, right, cause there's something message all along, there's something that's Um, as, as Todd pointed out, one of the big challenges there, and I believe number is fourteen feet, there's fourteen feet of grave. With that said.
I'm sorry, what does that mean? Sorry, yes, thank you, thank you.
So with, with that said, and, and Chuck, I don't know if, if this came in your study, but if that location is moved slightly north. Right? So we got a shed, we've got a soccer shed. Could figure out what to do with the shed.
Yeah.
Right, and if that, if that solves part of this problem. You know, it helps out, you know, our Miracle Field colleagues and helps get this done. Get the shed. Okay, because that's a, a more level area, less graves, further back from the wetlands. So that should absolutely be, and I don't know if it was considered, Chuck, but maybe that solves some some of the problems that you run into that side, so I just wanted to you know, put that out there as an element.
Right, and I, and I think, you know, again, this is a concept, you have some room to move that field around in there, you have some choices to make. It's to deciding, okay, how much fill do we put into race field versus, you know, being able to get folks down in there. Um, so those are, those are things that could be explored if, if this is something that everyone likes.
So Mike, first of all, I'm trying to send you this file, and it's just, my email's just not working right now.
Yeah, mine wouldn't work.
But I wanted to ask, when we went to see the Miracle Field, um, down in Southern Community, they had, they had said basically that, you know, they were um, obtaining more funding so they could put facilities in, right? That was like part of their thing, I really liked the secondary site at Birch Grove, um, but I I just have a fondness for site five, and I'm looking at the difference between the eight hundred and fifty thousand that you think it might be and the nine hundred and seven. Realizing that, Lisa, I don't know what we could do from a parking perspective, what DPW can do rather than us having to contract out. But for that difference, it's about a hundred thousand dollars difference. But I'm, I'm wondering from you guys' perspective, that gives you facilities and that's not something we have to look at further down the line, is that?
I went through that criteria, right, financial is one, it's a big dimension, I'm not gonna get, but all those other things get factored in. So, yeah, if you go in, it's like, I think cross farms would be very agreeable for all the different pieces, because it's got the bathrooms that are right there, so. Yeah, I don't think, okay, to be a no, because it's a hundred thousand dollars difference, so that's your question.
Well, that's the thing, I'm just thinking long term, if you get it someplace else and then you need facilities and all that later, we're looking at then creating another thing to go out and try to put those facilities in another, in another location, whereas here. And if we can move it up away from that drop by that big rock, that big rock is still there, right, like that big rock in the way. Down that area, if we can move it up closer, even closer to Adam's Adventure into the facilities and the concession stand, I think that would be good, but then I'm just wondering. We had in our capital plan, I know we were looking at doing work at Cross Farms for ADA accessibility anyway. Right, so that, you know, we've been, that's been a couple of years, been focusing on trying to get that more ADA accessible there. My question, like I said, is how much work can we from a DPW perspective do? To kind of, even if it's a dirt driveway to start with, before worry about, because it's there forever until we
Yeah, I'd have to find out.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I don't think Scott's online.
Yeah.
Well, it doesn't really know that right.
I'll, I'll just say probably as a quick interjection for that, Scott does have some experience with conservation when they've had issues with their grading. Little peaceful valley that they've utilized stone dust, and they did something similar for the Paul kills, that there's some opportunities wherever they might be able to create, you know, potentially some stone dust, you know, secondary parking that could offset the needs for all various leagues, that would be considered or explorably at a later time, but as, as a, maybe a temporary, then going in towards expanding paved parking that's more stable and, and more.
I think that's like would also alleviate concerns that the board of it might have of, you know, having the, the, the thing that we've got with the truck field. You know, and replacement and everything else, and then taking it and putting it in the site, not only is I think it more inclusive from an environment, from a community perspective, plus the facilities, plus everything else, I think it becomes part of our regular sports complex, its integrations.
Have any other comments, anyone else to think in the public room, either the board of ed or in the room tonight, before I think we go towards a strong discussion?
As an advocate for ADA forever, um, I really like Clark's Farms in a way, because we need to address the other issues of that part. You know, the ADA issues, I mean, it's, you know, we have a little pathway that we're on, but we're bringing hundreds of people, sports teams, family members. People with disabilities to come to participate, but then to watch the games, we really need, whether we do the Miracle Field or not, we still need to address all those issues.
Thank you, Ben. So I guess with that, I would probably take a quick straw poll, I mean, unless there's any
I do, I do have questions. I feel like we can surround the issue of funding a little bit. Um, and, you know, the Miracle League people have told us it's a real consideration, you know, we know that funding is a concern, right? Um, so are we talking about asking the Miracle Field people group to come up with all the funds to develop this site? Are we looking for the town to pick up some of those expenses, like what is, how are we realistically approaching?
I think that might impart me to require some of the negotiations, I mean, I would certainly like to see if there's any creative options. Maybe with the use of any ARPA funds, since I think we were, we've heard that the use of ARPA funds could be utilized for field development or and I think there would probably be some benefits to assisting with the grading and then our location is or site development, if that would save some of the costs towards the budget, I think that would be something to consider. I don't know if we might, right, necessarily, you know, non referring to bonding as an option, but that might be an avenue, I see, see Lisa shaking her head, so, if you're shaking your head about ARPA, so that seemed to be a little bit more amenable to the option.
Yeah, I mean, certainly if there's a state grant that comes about, that might be available, that would be something.
Right, and, and we also, we were gonna push a state grant for the, the ADA peak portion too.
So I think there's some options for the town to be an active participant and partner with, with this development and
Well, we, we certainly would need, I'm sorry, man, rejected, um, we certainly would need to, uh, sit down and discuss with the, with the Miracle League. Yeah, the challenges as far as, you know, the financing, if that's something that they're going to move forward with Talon. You know, this isn't acceptable, I mean, there's a lot to be discussed, I know there's other concerns on behalf of the town council that also need to be discussed regarding the future, the trust fund and, and many things that I know there's, there's a lot of concerns about. That we really need to begin those discussions if this is we're ready to, to move forward with, so, you know, I'm, I'm ready to discuss if you give me the permission to do so, I just pray we have a budget pass so I can make this happen quicker. Um, but, you know, certainly I, I would need input from each one of the counselors as to yeah, your concerns and what you're looking for, and then I can work with the Miracle Field and, and get what they're looking for and we communicate back and forth if we can come up with something, but I'd like to make it move quickly if we can. I, I'd also like to say that having the Miracle Field in our town is also an excellent opportunity for future economic development needs in the town or, um, or, or with economic development, with that being built, I could see us having a lot more people coming to visit our town, maybe using some of our businesses, our restaurants, things like that, our, our our concession stand, so I think there's a lot of opportunities here to help our town grow also.
Thank you, Lisa.
No, I appreciate, uh, all of that, because I think, um, there's a lot of people who really want to see this common, I think that there's a lot of benefits, you know, what Lisa said, um, is, is part of that, you know, the economic development, and, um, I'm, I'm thrilled to see us all willing to find a way to move forward.
Yeah. So I guess then, just maybe a quick show of hands, is there anyone that is in favor of, of item, uh, site five being the optimal location for purposes of negotiations, won't we get to that vote next week?
So, this is, yes, we want it?
Yes. It seems pretty unanimous as an option, are there any other options that councillors would like to be seen as like a secondary consideration or just to
My one, my one, one point five.
But, yeah, one point five was the Birch Grove, so I think that's a second option. Yeah.
No, would you be able to send your email again, please, I don't, we're having some, please, we're having some sort of issue of trying to forward it. And, uh, I can't So I received it, I just can't forward it, no, it's, it's not being very nice.
Well, I just, I just forwarded it to your son, to your email, but I was able to send it off pretty quickly, issues, maybe, uh,
You might be able to have better luck from your desktop.
Yeah.
So maybe that's for this.
Email, but I can't send the email.
Yeah, I can't.
Keep trying to forward it to Mike, I'm like, I've tried, tried like six times to forward it to Mike, but I
Yeah, I have, it's sitting in my outbox, I'm trying. Yeah, see, it's not liking it in the phone, it may be too big of a file.
Oh, wait, I can maybe check my phone, I did the point, I was trying for my, my, maybe you could send it to everybody.
I can try to at some point, but I don't want to believe we're having to kind of like, we're kind of starting a little to it's getting a little bit out of control, so I think, you know, there's no other discussion, you know, again, I think the packet is out, it's the, the agenda for the resolution. Once the packet's out, it's always the town council website, Mike, you know, we can send, we can send what Dave sent to us as well, you know, share the hat. Any Miracle Field representatives to be back here next Tuesday to provide any employer or thoughts, you know, that would be appreciated.
Yeah, I just want to thank you guys for kind of looking through it, or the assessment, it was well done, as Todd mentioned, but I do appreciate you guys taking the time. And I, I think as we go through, and I mean, you're right, the funding's a big thing, but, you know, for me, I, it's gonna be a combination of all kinds of funding lovers. And I think that's a discussion, what is the best, like, we look at the whole thing, right, what do we gotta contribute, what are the grants and stuff out there, what's the town? And just look at it, and, and I think all of us would love it to have to be And just look at it, and, and I think all of us would love it to have to be a donor, that's, and again, we only look outside, because we said, okay, we now we have money for people who don't, we need to find that's why we had to kind of, just in case something fell through, we had to kind of expand out, but I think all of us would love it to land here.
We'd love for you to have.
All right, thank you, Mike, is there any other discussion?
It has my Kevin's court. He's already working with me on it, like, you know, look Kevin's court at Birch Grove, we need a Kevin's court. Like part of my deal. Hey, Kevin's court, but. Okay.
Sounds good.
I happen to know the guy, so.
All right, if there's no other discussion, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn at eight forty-five. So. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed extensions, that everybody can have a great night.